Answer. Because you are what? You are capable. You are gifted and you are so unique to be opinionated. It's okay to be different. And it's so here to judge the people. The world awaits to receive you.
How's the money, y'all? There's poor people around. With your broke ass.
I could not be here breathing and be comfortable if I was really as bad as they was making. You know, nobody could be around me. So for me to be this calm, I must have some kind of inner peace. And my inner peace is knowing that once everybody taking time to really see what type of person I am, you'd be surprised that I stuck around this long. I have to make the life that I do live as happy as I can and try to do the best with what I have. You know, live the best life I can live, be as happy as I can be. Nothing is perfect for anybody.
Boys, I swear, I think I figured it out. You know why they don't want us redneck brothers and sisters and the hood brothers and sisters getting along? You know why? Because we'd be unstoppable. I'm telling you right now, we would shut shit down.
And that's what we could do.
Blessings, blessings, Levi family. You're getting the lips today. Okay, I'll probably jump on the screen a little bit later into this live. But today, something may be going down in Harvey. So this announcement was made a couple of hours ago, brought to you by Ms. Colby Chapman. She said tonight she urged all of us to be on a lookout because allegedly this monster, Hinyard number two, Hinyard big brother, is allegedly trying to set up shop with the Harvey Police Department to get her arrested. Okay? And as we talked about prior, you know, I mentioned something to the nature like, okay, he went on Jenna Dyer's show and he basically said that she assaulted the police. And one of the things I said was like, where's the charges? Why she's not locked up? What's going on? Now, just to give you a little flashback of what happened with the arrest and we're gonna give you an update. But according to reports, those charges was dropped. But let's watch this to give y'all a little flashback.
That selling her side of the is selling her side of the story today.
She has been arrested multiple times during city council meetings and Nate Rogers is live with more on that. Nate?
Absolutely Sylvia and Terrence. Kobe Chapman has been older woman here in Harvey for at least two years. Now, her critics call her outspoken. All will tell you that she's unafraid to challenge the member as well as other city council members about pressing issues regarding her word. Now first, I do want to take you to some video that's gone viral now on social media. The second ward alderman being physically removed by Harvey Police from a city council meeting. This is Chapman's third time being arrested by Harvey Police during a meeting. This last incident happening April 28th. She says officers bruised her arms in the process. Now Chapman was trying to address the mayor about a resident's property being sold, she tells me. But Mayor Chris Clark would not acknowledge her. The older woman kept speaking before a motion was made to have her dismissed from the meeting. Here's more.
He's got to actually play devil's advocate. Why not just be silent? Why resist? Why not just leave?
You know what? In that moment, I gathered my things and that's exactly what I was looking to do. But when three male officers approached me as a female, as I'm trying to gather my things, I think that would startle any person, whether it be man or woman. Because there's this abrasive approach to asking me to leave. And I simply was leaving. But the further point is, is all of that insinuated simply because I was being a voice for Ms. Allen.
And quite interesting, Chapman's mother was at that same meeting. She was arrested as well. Both of them now charged with disorderly conduct and resisting arrest. Now, of course, we reached out to Mayor Clark's team for comment on this issue. We've yet to hear back. We do know at six o'clock tonight, Chapman's supporters will be out here demonstrating right outside of City Hall, right before a city council meeting is to take place. Of course, we'll continue to follow this story, keep you updated on air and online in Harvey. Nate Rogers, Fox 32 Chicago.
Hey Nate. Okay, so what we're gonna do is just give you an update to today broadcast. They basically said that these charges was allegedly dropped. Bear with me, we cooking, cleaning and washing. So you're gonna hear some stuff in the background. And my lawn man just texted me, say he's coming. I'm sorry, y'all, but we on it like kryptonite because we got a lot of content to do. So here is the charges drop against Harvey Alder Woman after heated council meeting arrest. Okay, so this was yesterday years old. Let's play this. I hate when they make us watch commercials, don't you?
Are reportedly being dropped against Harvey Alder Woman Colby Chapman. According to the Chicago Tribune, she was arrested at an April city council meeting for disorderly conduct and resisting a police officer. Fox 32's cameras were rolling on April 28th when police took Chapman out of the council chamber. At the time, she called it retaliation over her vocal criticism of city affairs under Mayor Christopher Clark. However, in a previous statement, a Harvey spokesperson said the removal was for repeatedly disrupting the meeting proceedings. This was the second time charges against Chapman were not prosecuted.
All right, so this is not the first, but the second time. And as I mentioned to you guys, I think this is actually her third time being arrested because of her trying to speak up. So hold on one second. What I'm doing is actually waiting for a few people to get down there. I see them out there scoping. So what we're gonna do is just do a quick flashback because I want you guys to see if you missed. We did a live the other night talking about talking about the last Harvey interview. And I think this is it. Give me one second. All right, we're gonna get to it. We're just gonna show you if you have not seen it. We want to show you prior situation, one prior situation involving her arrest until we get our inside look of the meeting. We have two individuals that we got our eye on tonight. Usually, you know, if I can't catch a live, I try to do a replay. But today, I wanted to get this out there. Because we gotta keep our eyes on Harvey and make sure that yeah, their story doesn't get swept under the rug. Let's go. So this was a video I did late night, the other night, if you didn't catch it. And this is just a highlight of what happened to Ms. Chapman prior to this. And it was because she was allegedly asking a question or trying to ask the lawyer a question right after a council meeting. So let's just do this replay real quick.
Elected Alder Woman for the council and stuff in full transparency. But I should never be pushed, showed for anything of of that story, all because I want to speak without corporate counsel. That was all the legality of the city of Harvey.
Now, when she pushed, she goes to the push, push. It was, uh, it was a push. Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a Oh, okay. Okay, I, I'm sorry. But just to move me out of the way, you wish for something Okay, carry me to that one. The right, that's why she moved out like one. A meeting, that was quiet, my question.
So I just want to give y'all a little breakdown of what's happening because we're about to get eyes on the ground of what's going on in the Harvey meeting. Basically, at this particular time, it was a finance meeting that she went to early in the day. And she had some questions during the meeting. Again, Mayor Clark basically bombarded her as she tried to ask for a discussion like she usually do. As we went over the rules. And she does have the right to discuss anything that's on the agenda. So instead of him doing that, he bombarded her, did not answer and just rolled over. At the end of the meeting, instead of her causing the ruckus inside, like they said, that is not ladylike. That is not copacetic. She went to the side to talk to the lawyer. Now, the lawyer is this Caucasian lady with the blonde hair. And you're gonna see Kobe right over here. Now, we're gonna show you the replay at the end, y'all could get to watch this video. You know, I like to put combinations together. So that's why I said, watch my videos because I put it all together, see I could get comprehensive. Basically, Ms. Kobe was trying to ask the Caucasian lady a question, which is the lawyer. This lady with the flowers on her jacket is the administrator. She came in and interrupted the conversation. And she, Kobe said that she pushed through her, but it looks like she grabbed Kobe arm or something. And Kobe kind of jolted back. So what this goes to say, after this incident, well, during this incident, kind of got up in the raw because Kobe jolted back, got upset and was telling her, don't you ever do that. So there were some things that were shown. And I want to highlight to the audience, this video right here was not subpoenaed. This video is literally on the Harvey website because I believe that Mayor Clark tried to out her. Okay? She tried to out Kobe and show Kobe as being aggressive or whatever. So in this particular situation, she went to file charges against the administrator. Now, as of right now, I think this thing rolled over. But this is another situation highlighting Kobe asking a question. Her going a different route by not interrupting in the end, and then another situation blowing up. So I wanted you guys to see this one. Because I don't think a lot of people seeing the particular situations that happened with Kobe. But this is Kobe. You, I'm just kind of clicking through a little bit. Y'all get to watch this video because I did this late night. And it kind of got a little crazy. Okay, it did, it got a look, a little look. This was Kobe right here. And what they tried to show was that Kobe was being aggressive because she made this hand movement. So what Clark tried to do on the Harvey website, well, page, YouTube page, was cut up the video and show particular frames of Kobe looking kind of. But you know what it is. You know what they can do. Alter videos and all types of stuff. So this was one of the incidents that took place a couple of months ago. And now you have an update of what's going on right now where the charges allegedly was dropped. Now, I'm seeing people outside of the Harvey meeting. So what we're gonna do is just tune in. Now, if I can't get, you know how I do. I tune into one or two whoever got the best view. But I'm gonna have to give a shout out to your favorite survivor because she's gonna be outside. And I guess they're waiting to go in. So I'm gonna let y'all watch this. We're gonna play some background music and let it rock out. Because they posted started the meeting about 10 minutes ago. So I want to say thank you for being here with Grace Levi. I hope we can all work together to shed light on what's going on in Harvey. Because this, this devil, this devil, like how my grandma say, got to go. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Let's play this.
Vivian for streaming and letting the people see what's really going on.
Yes, Vivian.
Listen.
Let's go. It's nippy out here.
It's nippy.
I'm wondering why. Yeah, I just saw her pull, uh. I'm wondering why he didn't let them go in as of yet. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm gonna see what he do. He may want to rally up a crowd and
Everybody needs to be here to see.
To incite something because you know that man is a little tricky.
They can't park over here, no way, can they? Well, not really because of them walls, right? That's what I was thinking. Glad I got here early enough. Shit. I ain't have my plaque and I ain't want to park in a handicap and then they, uh, ticket me. I don't want to come. No unnecessary court dates.
And I do want to say thank you for everybody being here. Blessings, blessings, Levi family. Blessings. Hit the chat up. Y'all know I'm gonna put it on the screen. While everything is going down, I'm gonna be quiet because this is a live meeting. But we're gonna put y'all comments on the screen. Okay? And then we'll do our recap in the end. Is she here? Okay, she here, y'all. Hey, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
The bang was so loud, my mother said it sounded like that they were gonna tear the home down. We have them staked out, uh, awaiting for my arrival today. And all of this simply because I'm voicing the concerns of a resident who stays in the second ward, whose home was sold for a mere $2,000. And we can take you all back to January 6th when a gentleman was boarded up inside of a home here in the sixth ward. Or we can take you over to the pool tingle family, 17 families who've lost, lost their home. I mean, we have constant housing issues. This is a crisis. I'm calling for federal oversight. Right now, we have about five different audits we haven't completed. So I then question, how many funds are able to even come into the city to be purposeful, to support what's going on? Because we're not punctually on point. But if we continue to spend time wrapping our arms around Kobe Chapman, a second ward alderwoman, for the people, with the people standing always against the corrupt, the brutality, the injustices. Everybody out here has faced some issue here in the city of Harvey. Harvey dealing with suppression of voice. Ever since I was arrested, from my very first arrest on Thursday, August the 22nd, to Wednesday, October the 16th, to my mother. This is my mother. My mother was arrested on Monday, April the 28th. She, just like any other parent, would step up for their child. I just had hip surgery. I just had hip surgery and I'm seeing this and I shouldn't have to feel that I have to be autonomous in my approach. But I don't know what's gonna abuse me in a particular way, right there. Silence in my voice there. You all, all are here to witness what will happen next, right? Do you understand for the past six hours today, I've been staked out because I couldn't be seen anywhere hard because that gentleman panned the camera there. There, that gentleman there, right, with the ball head there. Detective Brazil said, hey, he, he came to my home, spoke with my mother. And he told her, we only want to speak to Kobe. What are the charges? What is going on? Again, vindication was served on yesterday. Those charges are no longer, uh, uh,
Yeah, they were dropped.
They were, they were dropped. Pardon my, my, my briefness or my brevity. But it's so much on my mind, so much in thought. I've literally been fighting since May 8th, 2023, when I was first initially elected. And any of these folks out here can tell you, right? I stand for what's right for the people. I haven't been reimbursed one single dollar since I've been in office outside of our bi-weekly paycheck. And everybody in this community knows what, what I do, how I do. I have potential giving for this community. And to know that my mere voice is being suppressed simply because I want to stand up for the heroes and sheros of the city of Harvey, that I am being suppressed and brutalized by police, by, uh, just being trying to, 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 to make me extremely nervous about any, about being anywhere present in the city of Harvey. Not only that, all these people here, they too may be in danger. All simply because they're standing up for what's right. This is not right. We need expedient oversight, transparency and accountability. And I'll let my attorney step up. Where is Mr.?
Right here.
Uh, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. At what point will reprimand step in place to say nothing for none? Uh, each time I've gone to court, either the decision hard has not presented an X amount of discovery or it's simply constantly continuing. These are on the backs of the 21,000 tax pay, 21,000 population of tax clear that are here in this committee, that are paying their money. They're paying money right now for added police support. They're paying money to go to my home and see about, uh, if I'm at home or not. We have real issues, right? The mayor comfortably talks about $164 million debt crisis. And we have money to spend frivolously on searching going in. Alder woman who simply was speaking out because somebody's home was being sold for $2,000. We have a real issue. We spent $30,000 on fireworks. We have streets here in the city of Harvey with no life. I should even tell you right now that the second ward alderwoman, how many people need to live in this city? Or what point, what was all the dilapidation? Or why is it that across, uh, Myrtle, from 165th all the way to 153rd, elder, 28 to 75 plus home service, he's taken away? These are issues. Why are churches being charged a business like when they're federally exempted? What is going on in the city of Harvey? This is a disaster. And we need immediate oversight from federal, state and all local level. I'm calling on every single elected official here in the Southland to come and be a bridge of what is going on. This is total injustice. Today, I, when I walk inside a city hall, am likely going to be arrested on something that I have even no understanding going, where again, I was vindicated on yesterday. So what more is it gonna say? Is this, is this truly about an occurrence or is this political retaliation? Because I'm able to tap in with my residents and demand that justice be served fairly and equitably for us.
Your attorney said earlier today, there was a big announcement that he wanted to make. I don't know if you want to speak more about it, that this is all just push you to want to challenge Clark and Ron for mayor here in Harvey?
Amen. Amen! As you should. Yes. Yes. Yes.
What you have now is not
Just for the record, Kobe is probably going to be arrested momentarily. Apparently, they're charging her with aggravated battery of is today's, today's charge.
Today's charge.
It is a felony. So unfortunately, she will be arrested and she'll have to appear in court tomorrow. So that's forthcoming. And I suspect that's why you see the 10 or so police officers. Pretty amazing. In any event, I do have a statement that I prepared for, uh, for you all. My client, Kobe Chapman, will be arrested by Mayor Chris Clark's administration, a political rival who has repeatedly abused his public office to target her and prevent her dissenting voice from opposing his personal political objective. This marks the fourth time now that Ms. Chapman has been arrested under Mayor Clark's administration. Just yesterday, as we all heard already, and I'm sure you saw it, it was all over the news. The Cook County State's Attorney found it appropriate to draw up the most recent case against Ms. Chapman and as well as her mother. And yet, one day later, here we are, the city of Harvey is back to its usual form, arresting my client and preventing Ms. Chapman from representing and arresting. Today's arrest, coming on the very day Ms. Kobe Chapman announced her candidacy for mayor, is no coincidence.
Wow.
It is a blatant and deeply troubling act of political retaliation. This is not justice. This is political persecution. That's what this is. Mayor Clark has a history of using the powers of his office to squash dissent and punish those who challenge him. His administration has been sued for abusive and questionable licensing schemes on small businesses as well as overbilling water charges to Harvey churches and residents. I could comment on those two laws because our law firm actually filed. His administration has used eminent domain to force residents from their homes for the benefit of others. And now, rather than having a candidate run who opposes the senseless practices, my client once again faces the misuse of the justice in an attempt to smear in silence. Ms. Chapman is not running for mayor out of ambition. She's running because the people of Harvey deserve better.
Absolutely.
She's running to put an end to the corruption.
Yeah.
Retaliation.
Yes.
Unchecked abuse that have harmed residents, displaced families and undermined the integrity of local level.
Amen.
Mayor Clark seems to believe he can rule without oversight or accountability, that he can target citizens with impunity while treating the city like his personal kingdom. Ms. Chapman believes the people of Harvey deserve a voice. And she will not back down. Ms. Chapman intends to vigorously defend against these unfounded charges and hold this administration accountable for its repeated misuse of power. The people of Harvey are watching and they deserve better.
What's your name?
My name is Daniel Olson. O-L-S is in Sam, W-A-N-G.
And are these charges stemming from the heat roll? Those, the charges that I'm sorry. Where would you like us to go? Uh, yes, whoever asked the question, these seven
If I lift a tripod.
And do you know when the felony, what the felony charges in regards to, is there
Aggravated battery of a police officer. That's all we've been told.
You haven't told anything else?
I've watched the video.
Right, it was a video.
How would you all feel?
In the world, watch it.
Your mother, out of the category of your right eye, was being, was being miscandled by, by the police. Right, all being, there are women here at the police department. Why couldn't a woman handle my mother and myself? So in the midst of me trying to gather my things, I'm also trying to gather my thoughts because I was so taken aback that they grabbed my mother so vigorously by the back of her, her, her coat, her jacket. My mother is petite. And so when they manhandled her, similar to how they manhandled me when you saw the blood across my eyes. I had also bruises across my leg from being tossed and turned. Anybody would, would turn and say, hold on, just give me a second. If, if the police have to have a warrant to, to arrest you, right? If the police have to have a warrant or ask you to search your car, if they have to have a warrant to ask you to go into your home, why wouldn't that same grace be getting to somebody if you're right up on them? Wouldn't you say, okay, we're gonna allow you a moment to gather your things before we execute you? It was all done very abrasively. Do you understand I have received a death threat? And Mangania, Detective Mangania, is the same officer who's arrested me three times that was on the case of the death threat that I received. Following then when I'm arrested, do you know that they staked out in front of our home? Wednesday, October 9th, we went to court. There was no discovery found. Friday, October 11th, we get to court. Uh, uh, pardon me, we didn't get to court. Friday, October 11th, they came back to our home, just like Detective Brazil and Detective Mohammed did to the gentleman that are standing behind you. And they came to arrest me. This is a plague of events and so redundant. At what point can we ask the mayor, Christopher Clarence Joseph Clark?
So many names.
Exactly, it's his idea. Is this is what he intends to, to collaborate and breathe and unify? His whole slogan was building a better Harvey. We're actually tearing Harvey down right now.
What does this say about Harvey being elected?
That says the city has a lot of fight to hold. That where other people see desperation and I see unity. Right, I grew up in this community. I grew up at 15216 Lexington. I was born at the Harvey Y and C at Right? I grew up in this community. I grew up at one fifty-two sixteen Lexington. I was born at the Harvey Y M C A. I asked you. I wasn't born at the Harvey. Yeah, right. That would be sweet. But I, I was born at Ingalls Hospital. I learned how to swim at the Harvey Y M C A. I caught the train to traverse the Chicago lane area right here in the Great Second War, the same war that I served, the same war that I am the first woman and woman of color since eighteen ninety-one to serve. So you know what it says to me? It says it's a lot of hope here. There's the opportunity for us all to corral our efforts and change the trajectory. And I'm gonna do that. And that's exactly why I'm running for mayor of the city of Harvey.
Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Because I'm telling you this, and then following this is what? Who's one? Could you imagine? Where, this is a civil rights act all over here, right? Except this time, could we call this black on black crime?
It is.
The community should be sharing in our, our subject matter expertise to take this community to the top. And unfortunately, that's being forbidden because I want to speak out about a two thousand dollar home sale. Or I want to speak out about the J and T group who just received five additional properties, because we talking about housing insecurity. They received five additional properties on Monday, April the twenty-eighth, the same day that we sold a home for two thousand dollars. And in their clause, every ten homes they receive, guess what? They demolished one. I'd like to think, was that the home that was demolished where the city took out a twenty-five thousand dollar loan on the backs of the taxpayer to pay the mayor, so the mayor can front that money to tear down a home? I'm following the trajectory and the pattern of events as it relates to housing insecurity. We have five thousand dilapidated homes in a city of twenty-one thousand people, only at six point two square miles. We have more dilapidated homes here than across the seventy-seven communities in the Chicago lane area. There's a problem going on. And we need swift investigation to determine what are gonna be the next steps in this trajectory. City of Harvey residents, we're calling going in. Not just in twenty twenty-seven, today. We need to pack these meetings out. The next meeting is on Monday, June ninth. Isn't it, uh, it, it behooves me, today, there are two agenda items. There's a three hundred and I think thirty-four thousand dollar contract on the agenda to replace the digital meters, right? To make them smart meters across the first and the fourth floor. I think that that's great, but I also like to know who were the other two bidders? How do I know that this particular bidder was the lowest bidder on the backs of the taxpayer? Also, we're approving a settlement agreement for our former police chief. There's a big question there. We've had seven police chiefs. And in the past two years during my tenure, we're still having two interim positions, interim city administrator, interim police chief. That's not how this thing goes. Because the only people who select interim are the mayor. How does the body of nigh actually be a part of all processes and procedures? When's the last time we had a treasurer's report? The treasurer can't even give a report.
Thank you.
Monday, June ninth agenda. Why does everybody have a report on there but the treasurer? But the person with the money. Go in there for a city council meeting. Why does the corporate counsel, Ansel and Gling and the treasurer not have a mic in front of them? Why are we suppressing anybody speaking about dollars? Why was I removed on Monday, February twelfth as the co-chair of the finance committee and the, uh, chair of the economic development committee? Because I want to see things change here in the city of Harvey, and I want residents to have full transparency. Why don't they watermark the, uh, older person package with confidential? There is nothing confidential about the city's business. You can't be a public official privately.
Say that.
You can't be a public official privately.
Hello.
That's exactly why. I'm willing to go to jail for y'all, Harvey.
Thank you, because we got your back.
This isn't right. And I, I don't know how many more times to say this isn't right. It doesn't matter that we're a home rule community.
No.
It doesn't matter that, that at any point in time that they can order and demand and weaponize the police department. Change is coming. We got about sixteen months. Get ready.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Kobe, you wanna go to the.
So, everybody walk with me. Let's all walk together and, uh.
Follow you to the police station.
No, they got to do this right now.
I'm saying we don't follow you there.
Yeah, everybody walk with me.
We got your back.
I want to thank all of you all for being out here today, for witnessing what's going on. This is a testament to standing down for residents, to social advocacy, to doing what devastating divas do.
I'm sorry.
And that's be about the business of the people.
Right. Thank you. I hope they take care of your ADA issues too. Not right now.
You should maybe ask them with the other aldermen, what do they think about what's going on? That's the six poor aldermen in the pit board. Let's ask them. Ask them. What do you all think about this? That's gotta die.
Island Alderman, who tore the people's homes, being sold to two thousand dollars, the old lady that was ousted out of the room. That Alderman sat silent for that?
Rogers is the finance committee chair, your finance chair. Where are the financial reports? Where are the finance reports?
What a shame, what a shame. The ancestors are crying. Look at you.
How about the business?
You call yourself an elder. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Nothing to say tonight, but try to get on hot under the collar.
These are your people out here.
He a zombie for the hell.
These are your people. These are your people. Yeah, they voted for you. Somebody did.
They probably want to get.
Maybe not. Maybe they were tired. You're just tired.
Maybe they were male.
One of the aldermen, he sat silent while a elderly black woman sold for two thousand dollars. And then you have to throw out the older woman to be arrested. She's. Who are you, sir? You are silent.
The mayor get intimidated.
Shame on you. Shame on you.
He want everybody dance his music like, like it's his.
It's a shame. It's a shame. It's a mighty shame. It really is a shame. And the, and Clark has dominions of the police department doing his bidding. That's even more of a shame. That's even more of a shame. These are the taxpayer's dollars. The taxpayer's dollars. What a shame you are. Yes. And I would say it without the camera on the side of his skin. What a shame you are.
Sorry, y'all.
This is what you represent for the people. Yes, let everyone see.
Is it?
What a shame you are.
Oh, I was like, wait a minute. What?
You probably.
Don't play with me.
Silent. 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 Silent as the older woman is persecuted by the mayor and the police department. You work for the police department, not for the mayor.
Girl, then I'ma fall. You want me to fall? I do got a cane though. Who need a cane? I got one in my car. So they telling her to turn herself in?
Before the meeting, Kobe?
This is so wrong.
Before the meeting?
She. Right. Can she do what the people have elected her to do before they? Is it that serious?
Won't she wait till the meeting, Kobe?
Right. Wait till the meeting is over.
No.
Hold on, let me go and upset assistance. Nah, hey. I'm sorry. They need patrolmen here for the older woman. I guess.
I'm not sure what's going on there. I've got this D I accident.
They got an accident calling, ain't nobody moving. What's his name? You can't tell us his name? So the meeting is canceled.
Today? No, 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 but because, because, let me say this. Let me say this. So all of a sudden, the meeting is canceled. And I'd like to see how of a coincidence that the meeting would be canceled. So Detective Brazil, what would you like for me to do? You said the deputy chief.
But. Right.
She doesn't have a car.
We can provide you with transportation. We'll provide you with transportation. We can bring your attorney, come to the station, and we can involve the.
Is it walking distance? Because we all going.
Everywhere we all want to go.
We all going to the station.
We can.
Is she going home tonight?
Harvey.
I've answered your question.
Why do you have to answer that question, Detective Brazil? Twice on my read camera today, I saw you at my door, and you were prepared to take me from my home to the station. So I thought that gun was right here. Was that the deputy chief answering? And who's we?
You in it?
But, so, so it's you that I'm coming to sit down with, not Detective Mohammed that was also in the car with you?
I asked a multiple question.
I saw multiple men.
You all hear that I'm headed to Harvey Police Department because today's meeting was canceled.
Right.
So I'm headed to Harvey Police Department. I sit on Dixie Highway.
Walking normal.
I'm headed there with Detective Brazil.
What's the address?
I don't know. Everybody, it's only, you pay bills.
Across the street from the Public League. Yeah.
One five three four zero Dixie Highway. I'm headed to the police station with Detective Brazil, who came to my home twice today to pick me up, who would like to have a conversation with me at one five.
Three four zero.
Four zero Dixie Highway. I am leaving now with Detective Brazil, who was requested by an unknown deputy chief to go.
Now he's getting you a ride.
I don't need a ride. I know, that's okay. I don't need a ride.
Yeah, we her ride. We want to make sure she come back the same way she went in. We gotta make sure she come back the same way she going in.
Yeah, I, I want to know what they're gonna say. Why? I don't trust them to take her.
It's some bullshit. Yeah, I'm gonna go with it. Yeah, the lawyer's going. Yeah. All right, I'm gonna hit them. One fifty-three forty Dixie Highway. It's gonna be on the, the east side of the street.
All right, Levi.
One fifty-three forty.
Y'all let me know what y'all want to do. Do y'all want, um, me to continue streaming and follow her and Ryan while we kind of watch? Or I can stop the stream until, when they do the meeting or Tuesday, we can reach that. Y'all let me know what y'all want to do. I'm here for it. Because stay, I could chase, I could chase tonight if y'all want me to. Shout out to Vivian, shout out to Ryan. I'm about to check out his video.
Having a walker. I just want y'all to know that. I don't know what just happened. My thing went around the world.
Let's see what Ryan.
I'm being careful, y'all. We, uh, and we got cameras everywhere. So definitely, definitely, I'm being careful. Who is that? I thought that was a mate that hang. Well, at least they canceled the meeting. They got legit, like half of Harvey out here. I, I just want y'all to know that, that they legit is on some bullshit. I'm glad I got my body cam on. So I'm recording even when I ain't recording. Let me plug my phone back up. I can't read nothing y'all saying, but if y'all gonna stay along on this journey with me, it's quite all right. But yeah, that's some bullshit. That's some mega bullshit. Um, what's going on is there, they dropped the, um, other charges that they had brought against Kobe Chapman, and they are now charging her with assault of a, uh, police officer, which is a felony. So, uh, we're headed to the police station for her to have a conversation with an officer. I'm definitely driving carefully. Now Harvey, leaving, going to do some work.
So I want y'all to pray for Ms. Kobe. Yes, I'm gonna continue. I'm gonna ride out with them. Pray for Ms. Kobe, pray for Ms. Vivian. They have a whole caravan van that's following her down here for allegedly disquestioning.
Harvey just like fucked up. We need Kobe that bad. This lady ain't did nothing. And she just had hip surgery. I forgot all about that. That's just so distasteful. It's just so distasteful.
And I want y'all to really reiterate some of the things that Ms. Kobe said. She, she's still giving the, uh, sentiments that, um, Harvey is dangerous, that the resident's life is in danger. Now, I was cracking jokes in my last live saying like, hey, the mayor before Clark, then you know, whatever those brothers, they was, you know, running down on people and allegedly in heart, and Clark basically said, I'm not as bad as them. Y'all couldn't even talk before. But it seems like it's the same sentiments. Highlighting in one of the videos that we went over a few weeks ago, she was again ousted by the four to two sentiment when she was asking for her reimbursement. And everybody else received her reimbursement. Like, what we gonna do is a, a few recaps of the Harvey meeting, and you can obviously see how he's not following Robert Bruce's order. Every time that Ms. Kobe speaks, she's literally ignored or overpowered by some type of fake vote. So while they're traveling down there, this was one of the things that I just wanted to share with you guys. Did we gotta try to, we gotta strategize on this. Just like we were strategizing on Hinyer, we have to strategize on what's going on here. One of the first things that is remarkably different is that like it is a four to two. Um, so it's like everything they vote on, the mayor is getting because he has four of these aldermen under his belt. There are two aldermen that I think are the weakest link that I do think that people need to hone in on, find out a little bit about them and run them like they're Hinyer. And that, I think that lady named Stacy. And that, I think that lady named Stacy, and then there's another lady, if y'all have her name, is the Caucasian lady. Those two. Now, the Caucasian lady, I don't know her name, but she did say she was under the last mayor's, and how it wasn't that bad now, and she's happy to be under this administration. As I mentioned, I believe she has some post-traumatic stress from being abused, and still just need to make money and not leaving Harvey. So she's to the point of no return. Until you guys get on her and start to expose her. If you guys do that, y'all gonna start to see the table turn when it comes to morality and moral compass. That's what I really think should be the first step, people, because from now, if it's sixteen months, she said, didn't he just get in? Didn't he just get voted in? Please, y'all. That mean he got four years, right? So I'm, I'm not sure what she's talking about, but if, one, they can do recall efforts against him, they need to start that. Two, if they can focus on these aldermen and all the women, and start to put pressure on them to be honorable. That's first and foremost, because from now until they get him out of there, um, he's gonna get everything that he want. That's what I'm noticing. That's why the meetings just go by so fast, because they're literally just voting for him. So I just wanted to keep that, uh, we kinda put that out there, guys, cause we gonna have to strategize. And also, um, the residents of Harvey should report. What is her name? Hold on, let me go right to it. I got, I, I got the Harvey website up, hold on. Um, the treasurer, the lady who's in charge of the treasury department, you guys are gonna have to, um, report her. For, and her name is, um, Ayesha Pickett, yes. Let me take a quick picture of her, so y'all can know who I'm talking about. Y'all gonna have to contact the comptroller, cause they already levying Harvey's money. So they got their eye on Harvey. If y'all didn't see that video, I put it up, why they was levying it, and they have, they have a right to levy it, because they owe money. They owe money to the fire department pension. Sound about familiar? So this is the lady I think that you guys may want to pay attention to. Let me see, can I get it on the screen? And this is where y'all gonna get some of them financial papers released, because that's the issue. Uh, her, the man right here, I'm gonna have to say it. She's gonna be the one that you guys report to the comptroller office, okay? Let me, um, just clear up my board just a little bit, and then I'm going to, um, show y'all who the lady I was talking about. Who I'm gonna take a screenshot, and I think believe her name is Shirley, not Stacy. Okay, so Ms. Shirley, in my opinion, I think you guys need to hone in on her, cause she'll be the easiest to go down because of her alleged post-traumatic stress. Y'all know I pay attention to, to a lot of stuff, and I've been listening to commentary, and she's a butt kisser. She says she's gonna kiss boys, collect their check, and get the hell out. Cause it's not, it's going right here. Gonna have to get some of those votes turned over. You guys on the pride, okay? Um, one more lady, now this was the lady who had great demise or disdain for Kobe. So you guys are gonna have to keep your eyes on her, because she looks like she'll go through the back door and do some of these stuff. And her name is, um, Ms. Smith. Is, tell, tell me, tell me, tell me, telling me? I'm saying it wrong, guys, y'all pronunciation for me. I'm bad with names. But her last name is Ms. Smith, and she's over the third ward. Now we gotta, gotta watch her. She's not gonna be easy to break. And she's gonna go after Kobe, like, for real, whatever she can find. This is the lady who called Kobe a man in the meeting, said she wasn't ladylike. And I think this is the lady that went on Jet Diet Show. This buck is up there talking crap about Ms. Kobe. Not the issues, not the report, not the financials, not, not, that is not transparent. Y'all have to make her aware of what's her duties. Okay, it looks like they pulling up, y'all. They pulling up, I'm gonna, um, let our co-hosts, Vivian, take the wheel. And I'm gonna mute myself, thank you for being, I appreciate you guys, and us keeping our eyes on the south side.
Alright. I'm here.
Oh, girl.
I need to put these keys on my, that was stupid. There we go. Y'all, I'm not good at rushing. Cause I gotta live a, a stress peak life. Okay, one, two. Alright, and we're walking. It's muddy out here.
Then just weeks before that, Ms. Cheryl Hunt, her sister, whose foot was mauled off by two rock wilders at eighty pounds of weight. Could you imagine then the detectives pivoting to ask, well, why were you out late at midnight? As if all of us haven't been out to hang out, maybe with family or friends after midnight. How do you, how, you can't even make these things make sense when we're here at the police department? For me to turn myself in on something that even the detectives couldn't bring to light for you all? The detective came to my house not once but twice. And the second time, like my mother said, it sounded like they were gonna break the door down. So they couldn't, they couldn't arrest me at my home. But they couldn't arrest me here? They couldn't arrest me at City Hall? What was the need to even have the special meeting? If we already have, according to our annual calendar, that every second and fourth Monday of the month at seven, we already had a meeting in place Monday, June, March. The time to have the special meeting was when we didn't have our meeting just a week ago on Monday, uh, May the twenty sixth. Because it was Memorial Day, fast forward, you should've had a special meeting on Thursday, May twenty ninth for the residents.
Do you think they didn't arrest you?
Absolutely. And they're not gonna let you see me get arrested here. But I want you all to report it far and wide, that unfortunately, they didn't want, they want to throw the rock. Cause why not arrest me in front of everyone? You said that I did something. You said I committed a felony, I've never had anything on my background. Anything, okay? I'm a thirty-seven year old resident of the Great Second War. I earned my Bachelor of Arts in Criminology and Forensic Science in two thousand and nine. I earned my Master of Program Leadership and Work Worth Education and Development in two thousand and eleven. I'm a member of a social action sorority, better known as Delta Seminarian Sorority Incorporated.
Okay.
I have my own nonprofit, Anya, where we service young people and teach uplifting aid, financial literacy, opportunities, techniques, and just resources for those in marginalized communities. I was a school counselor for nine and a half years. I currently help men coming out of our penal system, specifically our black and brown men, with fostering work worth education and development initiatives. We recently started a trucking company for those men. Because I, I believe in second chances, right? And I was even in a belief to give the mayor some second chances. I even said on Monday, May twelfth, when we hosted the city council meet, uh, this, uh, press conference, that I'd be willing, cause I'm a leader. I respect the position. At the end of the day, I also have a perspective, but I'm even willing to sit down with Mr. Clark, Mayor Clark, as he likes to be called.
Yes. Yes. This is not part of the charges. What I've been told is this is a aggravated felony, aggravated battery. Which was not included in the charges.
No. The charges yesterday were obstruction and resisting. Those were missing here, just now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Amen. Amen.
They're only gonna let you and your attorney in.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just wanna tell everybody about my supporters, that I appreciate you, you all are seeing me, what time is it?
Eh, oh, I don't know. Six twenty-nine. Thirty-one.
Tell anybody you can arrest my alderman here, why you have to hide it? She's elected to represent me.
I wouldn't turn myself in.
I wouldn't turn myself in either.
Let them come get you.
Your attorney is here, let it, listen to her.
Unfortunately, I, I don't have a choice, right? This is the unfortunate piece of, of.
Dictatorship.
You know, and, and being able to weaponize this as well too. Unfortunately, I have no choice, right? Take, let me take y'all back, remember Wednesday, October the sixteenth? I had to come to turn myself in, and those charges too were found. Just speaks like. So unfortunately, this is just, this is the jurisdiction that, that Harvey can't just send you away, right? Everybody has due process, this has to go before a jury or judge. So tomorrow, I'll vote before a judge, but tonight, I need y'all to pray real hard to God. And talk to him.
Yes.
Cause I'ma be okay.
You are.
I know I'ma be okay.
You are. Right.
There's nothing wrong with you. We're expecting the same result tomorrow.
And I will pay them a visit or something. I got a thousand man crew that I will bring, I come up in there. I'm, I'm, I come up in this, so. Think I won't. I get my thousand man crew, come straight up.
Love you, Mayor Kobe. 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 Listen.
They don't even want the other alderman in there.
They not letting you in.
That's okay, that's okay, they have to get you to report.
So, as you can see, reporters are not allowed into our own public building.
Isn't this amazing?
This is normal for Harvey.
And I questioned him on that topic.
He stood alderman right here.
And they weren't gonna allow you in.
I was supposed to get justice.
That's what he did, he said it before they had.
Wow.
Don't ever in your life disrespect me again, rest myself. I don't know who the fuck he is, but that ain't the route. Don't nobody gotta stand.
No, 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 no. And he's an elder.
I have talked to both sides of this. I have called the mayor and I've called Kobe, I'm talking to everybody now, so they can hear me. I talked to both sides. I'm not talking about him no more. I'm not talking about him no more. I am not. Disrespect me because he a elder?
He was.
I articulate with my words, that's the way I.
So with that said, he's an elder in Harvey. He's been there for weeks and months and months. He's been weeks and months. I'm a whole woman. I'm a woman.
This is what we do not need to be doing. This is not.
Y'all missed the point.
About nobody's respect. He disrespecting for no reason. I don't know that man, he disrespecting for no reason at all. Yeah, I wanna be very, I'm very cool, I'm very cool. Nice to meet you, Minister, but now you gotta take dumb shit, cause that's all thing y'all think. Man, this the. Let me just say this. If they, if you ain't, if you ain't joining the bandwagon, it didn't sensationalize you a whole motherfucking setup. What the fuck could I say? Excuse me? These ladies, what these people threatening us? What these people threatening us? I came here to make sure she wasn't mishandling, you disrespecting us, don't know what the fuck you talking about. Yeah, everybody on it took the weird ass shit. I'm the right one, I'm gonna go with wherever y'all wanna go with, but I'm not here for no bullshit. If y'all not here for Kobe, go the fuck home, that's straight up. If you ain't here for Kobe, go home.
Sorry, that was funny. All of this is kidding.
Ain't nobody taking disrespect to nobody.
Ain't nobody. If you want Rocky, he lives in Harvey. Walk for a man that lives in Harvey. I'm waiting on Kobe to get home, that's it, that's all.
For nobody's policy.
My bad.
Right now, y'all wanna know why I'm here? I'm simply here because we wanna make this a smooth process. But let's put it on the record, I spoke to both her and the mayor, and I voted them to de-escalate. Neither side was with it, so I stood off to the side and I let y'all do what y'all believe in. I'm telling nobody how to feel, nobody who will not who to or who not to support. For while y'all sitting up here arguing, y'all got, it look like a, a desert in the city. And when I was a young child in Harvey, this wasn't like this.
Amen.
So I don't care about y'all politics. Y'all got more foreigner squatting on y'all land than anything else. So I'm gonna talk about that. You said what? Correct. Correct. The mayor and Kobe. We getting disrespected by people's success, because I didn't come in here swinging either way. I got family members in Harvey, and I'll tell you this, they don't like me being disrespected. And ain't nobody gonna tell me where I can and cannot go. I'm just trying to get down to the bottom of the truth, like I've done in every city I've ever been in. So y'all gotta give it, y'all, y'all gotta give us the same amount of time to figure it out, as y'all trying to, y'all been in it? Well, give us a chance to back you up. So I'ma tell you what I believe personally. At this point, due to what's happened today, it has changed everything. But I will not focus on the politics. I wanna figure out what's wrong that's hurting the people who live here and focus on that, and that alone. I, I think, okay, that might be a problem, but y'all gotta, I'm telling you, you gotta, let's move. Let me tell you, let me tell you what I, well, like I said before, and this is what I'm standing on. You all are getting grant money from the federal government, and guess what? But the state of Illinois is taking, the state of Illinois is taking forty percent of y'all grant money before it ever hits this village. And guess what? Kobe nor the mayor is responsible for that.
The mayor is. He's the mayor of Harvey. She not responsible for that.
We would love to believe that, but I'm gonna tell you something that, I'm gonna tell you something that you can easily research. I'm gonna tell you something that you can easily research, cause one thing I'm not is a liar. Her name is Susanna Mendoza, that's who's responsible for that.
See, I've been here since nineteen ninety-five, sitting in the front, I know what's happening, okay?
But you need to talk to her.
I don't think y'all hear it, I'm not trying to tell y'all who to support. If you support Kobe, support her all the way. If you support her, support her all the way. I don't care about them right now, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about things that got city Harvey looking the way it's looking. Y'all are getting federal funds, they're being taken from y'all, from the state.
Yeah.
Okay? That's what, that's all I just said, I didn't pick a side. Okay, that's what, that's all I just said. I didn't pick a side. Right now, that's what I'm finna go do. I'm finna fight like hell to make sure Kobe isn't in jail, knowing that she needs to be. I don't have no control over this. But there are people who want you to believe that just because you don't come in screaming and rapping and raving that you are against.
I'm gonna go across the street, y'all, cause it giving me a headache. All right, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused too. Look at Regina. Hey Regina, hey beautiful. I'm gonna be emailing you, baby. Justice for Alexis. Um, let me see what this gentleman has to say. Girl, I can't listen. That was a lot of bit. That was a lot. And every time is a lot. I'm always in the middle of it. I ain't got nothing to do, but I just feel like I, I kinda understand what's going on. Um, this, this is just from my synopsis. As you guys see, I've been in my own lane. But, um, because there's been a lot of mixed feelings about Dalton and yes, so all the rigmarole that happened with Dalton. And the end result was that y'all got the mayor that y'all wanted, y'all got the board that was in. But the, um, you know, it was a lot of changes with the people who was actually fighting, you know, and I'm gonna say the YouTubers who were allegedly fighting for Dalton. You had people who were together, not together, not talking, exposing each other. You even heard me kind of come out and expose some stuff. Now, I'm talking because this just got emotional and I want you guys to maybe understand. Y'all, y'all can say if I'm wrong or not. But because people kept saying that, and this what they were trying to make Jedediah out to be, is someone who was taking the light. Now, this was the original argument when he came in with LNC and Burgundy and all of them, and it became contentiousness. Now, me being an observer of patterns, I'm seeing this pattern again. You know, he had a little bit of that happening, um, Flint. But I think that's easing over because there's so much going on. And it's kind of the same thing that's happening in Harvey, but there's different technicalities. Now, with this particular situation, I know there was some word exchanged. Look at Martin G. Everybody down there, they on it. Look, looking like a young old man. Shout out to Martin G. So with this particular situation where I think some things have went to the left, and you can tell me am I wrong or not, is, um, allegedly there were words said by Ryan or, or an alliance that was made with people who have been playing out, talking crap. And y'all know who these people are. They even talking about me. They just, whatever. These are people that I don't even put in my category. So because Ryan and those people, I mean, not my category, my, my, um, my mouth. Um, because Ryan has chose to talk about them, I guess, or align with them in some form. This has, um, caused some contentiousness with him and Jedediah, okay? So that's, that's kind of that going on. And then you had Mayor Clark go on Jedediah's show. And he was long-winded, um, a lot of hot air. And I'm talking about Clark. So people get upset when you open your platform up to people who they may not like or may not trust, okay? So they got mad because of that and also kind of the way the interview went, where Clark was able to give a lot of hot air and bullshit. And, um, it wasn't pushed back on. Now, what I will say with this particular situation, I don't know what Jedediah Resources is giving him about the situation with the comptroller. But I did do a video, just I'mma put it at the end of this, um, about why Harvey money is being, um, levied by the comptroller. And I mentioned that today. It's because they did not pay their firefighters pension and police department pension. And this was, I think, before Clark and going into Clark. So I think he received that. And it got so gross and so much litigation to my understanding that it got to the point that the comptroller was able to legally put a lien on it. Cause the comptroller who he's talking about, Ms. Susan, she is an elected official. She is, um, educated in her background. She's not just someone who's just put in that position. I did some research on her when I was looking up the comptroller office and what they were saying about what was going on with Dalton. And basically she didn't have any uh to go after Dalton or do anything or make them give in their paperwork because she don't have subpoenaing powers. So the power that she got was actually the power from the courts. So I'm not sure what's going on. So I think people feel contention, tension towards Jed, which I just saw because of what I just stated. Does that make sense? And if I'm off, you guys let me know. I'm from the outside, kinda like, okay, I'll let the lawyer speak. Hold on. She was going to. This ain't. It's low guys.
Could you comment on the, I'm a second ward resident, so she's my alderwoman. She sent out a letter to all of us, a copy of the letter where Harvey Police sent out this notice that said the jail cells here are not fit to put humans in. We have not received any notification since then that they are in proper condition. So would you care to comment on that or is there anything we can do? I'm concerned for my alderwoman and, uh.
Oh, good. She's not staying here.
Okay, good. To Markham? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll be over. I'll get to get her in the morning. This is stupid. No way. This is stupid.
They're not usable. They can't, do you know, you don't, you can't even put anybody in a cell here.
I know. I've been in it before.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, I'm that teacher. He has good trouble. Always good trouble. Always good trouble.
All right, thank you. What time, what time tomorrow?
Um, nine o'clock.
What time in the morning, uh, Mark?
Nine AM. Nine AM.
Nine AM. You know what courtroom?
And I, I, I fully expect it will be short and sweet and she will be out of there.
Do you know what courtroom?
They told me one-on-one, but.
Just double check. Okay. Okay.
They don't have a case number yet. They haven't put it into the system, so they don't even have.
They don't have their shit together?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we out.
That is. All right, y'all. I'm just about to get ready to go home.
Okay, well, we bout to knock him out.
So courtroom one-on-one, nine AM tomorrow. Markham. I want to say a great thank you to Vivian being out there. Tomorrow, uh. Getting some good footage. Yeah, watch my live. This on my live, the whole thing. Okay. Yes, absolutely. And I was gonna meet with her today. So I had a actual meeting with Kobe today. And we was gonna discuss, cause I was trying to get her to run. And I'm so excited that she did say she's running for Harvey. All right, I'mma be over here eavesdropping, y'all. She's gonna start to, um, get off her lob. I'm over here. I'm over here eavesdropping. Shout out and love to Vivian for getting this recording and being down there. They need a whole new slate. Clean Harvey twenty-twenty-seven. As you say, as you say that there is a, um, a few content creators, y'all know I find them. And he's been actually following Harvey for a while. And we're gonna, when we do some, when we do our recap, I'm gonna show a few of his videos. And in his videos, he showed the rough streets of Harvey, the gangs, the, the way everything's looking terribleness. And it's like called the lost, um, city, the lost, uh, the worst city in the South Side and the most dangerous city in the South Side. He has a few videos like that. Um, why did they, um, let's put this up there. Why did they have her come turn herself in there if she's gonna be locked up in Markham? Well, that's, Markham is where they're gonna be having, I guess, the, um, court proceedings. To my understanding, Harvey is that small. Just, just the other day, we heard them basically approve for them to, um, start to circumvent their traffic tickets to their courts instead of having it in another county. And I believe it was Cook County or whatever. So now they don't have to pay for double administration fees or administrative fees to outside town. So that's probably why they may not have this type of court in Harvey. So they maybe, like I said, third party it to Markham. But, cause or, or I have to verify is where the meeting take place? Is it in Markham? I don't think so. I think it's in Harvey, right? Yes, and then shout out to Ryan. I don't believe Ryan was live on his YouTube. Um, I was looking, so he may have been live on his Facebook. So I'm gonna do a brief recap of Ryan's video and see if there's any angle that I missed. So when we go over the meeting on, on, um, Tuesday, on Monday, um, we'll probably be able to re, rehearse some of the angles that we missed, okay? Um, you said I love eavesdropping. I'm over here, yo, like, let's just listen. We got all of the content creators. Not just one, bring a lot. I'm just gonna be honest. Um, someone said this, and this was a great comment. Shout out to Miss Williams. And this is exactly what should happen. And this is exactly what I've been doing. And y'all know I'm not perfect, but I've been doing this. You can't let your personal issues with a person to be bigger than the fight in front of you. And I'm gonna be honest. Um, that's very important. I can share a lot with you guys, but I'm not. But I had to bite the bullet in some circumstances dealing with this Dalton thing, Alexis thing, and not wanting to deal with people or have nothing to do with them. But if they have the same MO and they're moving in a positive manner, I mean, even if they not, it has nothing to do with you. You know, you should always just focusing on what you doing, what you can bring to the fight because we're all pretty much different. We all have our different ways of looking at it. So, um, but like I said, I think the situation with, um, let's take our cohorts off the screen. Look, look at Harvey. Uh, we gotta come and save you, Harvey. We coming, baby. I think the situation happened with Jedediah was a little different. It stemmed from a lot. Um, the Dalton thing, a lot of stuff in the background, and also definitely the way that interview went. Um, and then people tried to, or, or maybe he made the inclination. And I'm just on the sideline watching that he may have got paid. So someone is saying that and he, he, Jedediah never said he got paid for the interview, but that was one of the things he was kind of going back at, I heard. And, you know, cause I'll be, I'll be creeping and just be like, what the hell? It's going, what the hell is going on? You know, you can't be a Karen if you ain't peeking in a window. So that's why I'm able to kind of break this all down to you guys. No feelings attached, just, but if I'm wrong, you guys, you know, can leave your comments. But that's actually not what this live is about. And that was one of the issues. The issue is that the fight always get taken away from because we're arguing and bickering about stupid things. You see what I'm saying? If you don't agree with his position, you feel he was suspect or whatever it is, watch it and keep it moving or don't watch it. If you feel anyone is, but you stay focused on what you're doing. You see, does that make sense? And what we're doing today and what we're gonna be doing for the next couple of months, cause you know, once I got my eye on a problem, it's a wrap. We gonna get her into merdanship, miss, madam. Yes, like I love Kobe. She my shero, y'all. I got a shero. Um, and get this, uh, demon face out of the sea. Now, no one has picked this up, but no one has counteracted. Can someone let me know? Can you guys basically get elected official removed in Illinois? Is the process available to you guys? Did y'all verify? Just somebody tell me yes or no. Cause it's a law out there. There has been people recalled out of their position. It is no, to my knowledge, is no particular timeframe before, after the election. So, didn't he just got mayor? Didn't he just become mayor, y'all? I mean, y'all gotta let me know. Because if he just became mayor, we got, we don't got three, four more years of this shit now. Come on. Serious? Oh, so, okay, they said that, but guess what? We have to focus on what's the issue. And the issue, it's not Jedediah. It is right now, the issue is Harvey. And laying out what's the problem. Also, not only calling out the problem, cause you know what the hell we do here. We find issue. We find issues and we find solutions. Now remember guys, I gave some solutions. Let's just pay attention real quick to the people we need to hone in on. If you really wanna fight for Harvey, get on them, okay? Y'all need to get a Harvey Politrix. What is Dalton Politrix, Politics? Get Harvey Politics going. This is the first, first person y'all need to start emailing, asking why she's not doing her job. Ride her like a donkey. Freedom of information request the clerk out date SCS. Threaten lawsuits. Put this lady on notice, you know? Take some pictures. You know, she's an elected official, guys. Now, I ain't telling y'all go stalk somebody, but if she's elected official, you can see what she be doing. And let her know, you not doing your job. And this one as well. Keep your eyes on her. These are the first three that I recommend because this lady is very contentious against Kobe. And I just think when people are contentious against someone, they make up things, they find things and they go after them deliberately. So with that being said, I think I said a mouthful. We're hour and nineteen minutes in. If you like my commentary, you love what I do here, please hit the like button and I appreciate you. What we actually was gonna do, we're gonna do a deep dive on the Rob, uh, Rodney Hinton Jr. case. We had the lawsuits of Rodney Hinton Jr., also Rodney Hinton, the young boy who was shot, the son. We have the lawsuit for that. And we also have, um, give me one more second. Let me just make sure that I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm saying the right thing. It's one more. He filed a petition to habeas corpus. As soon as I thought about it, let the body go. He, um, Robert Hinton, he filed, if y'all don't know who that is, the gentleman who killed the officer in the possessive force case, that's why something we're gonna really file. He filed habeas corpus. So we're gonna go over that tomorrow morning. So if you're into law, into court cases, you know, this is the place to be to get that work. So until then, you know what we doing, right? Hit the like button.
Hi, this is Superman Tiffany A. Hinger, the people's mayor. So you guys doing a lot of snitching.
All that my snitching for you. I love a good jam. And I'm S-I-N-G-L-E again, outside hanging out the window with my ratchet ass friend. Let's go.
Go, Carrie.
Let's go.